Good evening, I'd like to call to or a regular meeting of the Board of Education in the Ocean Central School District. Tonight, Tuesday, August 30th, 6:30pm in the District Administration Building and live stream through YouTube. The Board just came back from a tour of the school facilities. We were able to see all four buildings and also talk and have some discussion about the main street building too. So I want to thank everyone for your input over the summer, everything to get the buildings ready for our students. It's much appreciated and probably don't have the time to list everybody that was involved but really do appreciate it. Especially our janitorial maintenance staffs, so thank you for that. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of meditation. I will ask that you keep in mind James Bloom, the father of Alyssa Moreno. She is our Assistant Director of PPS. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, I am free executive session. I need a motion. Brett, Jason. Be it resolved, the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent to reconvene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to the employment history of a particular person. All those in favor? Opposed?
Would you like to resume the meeting?
I don't know.
Oh, I need a motion. Sorry. Need a motion. Tom and Jason. So, I guess the motion group. Next on the agenda is Privilege of the Floor. We don't have anyone signed up tonight, so I'm not going to read the actual policy summary. Next on the agenda is the President's Report. As I had stated before, we had the opportunity to see all of the buildings, and I just want to say welcome back to all of our families, welcome to all of our incoming new families, whether it be starting in kindergarten or just moving into the district, and welcome back to all the teachers and our admin, and I look forward to a really happy, healthy 22-23 school year. Next on the agenda is Legislative Update, and Tom is not here tonight, but I do know that there is one scheduled for this Wednesday evening, so I look forward to hearing about that meeting. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Curtis Coates.
Thank you very much, Mr. Solti. So, I want to speak specifically to some of the items that we've been working on to prepare for the opening of schools. Before I do, I want to offer a special welcome to Annabelle Topcar who's with us this evening. She will be appointed on the Consent Agenda for a full-year relief replacement in Goshen Intermediate School. We had a wonderful time in the debut process where they're both at the building level with Dr. Wentworth and Matt here in District Office. She and I had some great conversation with them, looking forward from a wealth of experience in the city school system and other opportunities to have her join us and help us here in Goshen Intermediate School. So, welcome. We're happy that your family could be with you as well tonight.
Thank you so much.
I also want to welcome this Andrew Ricciardi, a longstanding member of our District Office team who will be appointed this evening as our new Personnel Assistant. Mr. Ricciardi certainly has been a valuable asset this year in Central Office, and we certainly know in our new role of Personnel Assistant, he'll help us close many gaps that we need to work on and become more effective, more efficient, but we also know our professionalism and our hard work will serve our well in the position as well. So, thank you for joining us tonight. So, we had an opportunity before school began to have a Safety Committee meeting, and this will be a primary focus for us as we begin the new school year. We're reminded by the tragedy at the end of the last school year in Nevada, Texas, about how important school safety going to be. We unfortunately had been pulled away from many of our safety protocols when we were dealing with the issues of COVID and all the COVID restrictions that have occurred. The entire leadership team had an opportunity to come together, to revisit our practices, to look for ways to strengthen our practices. Our law enforcement community was here, our village police were here, the state police were here, and the town police were here, as well as fire and EMS. Not only did we review our plans together, but we also did two tabletop exercises with different real-life situations, one regarding a chemical spill which we had happen at the high school, and one regarding an active shooter simulation that Sergeant Chris Smolcy walked and grouped through. I think it's important that we have ongoing dialogue about how we continue to fortify our safety protocols. Our communication systems is one thing that we need to take a look at, but we also need to make sure that our staff are well-informed. One of the things that we unfortunately have gotten away from is simple things like what do these phrases mean? What does a lockdown mean, and what am I supposed to be doing during a lockdown? What does a hold-in-place mean? When we are better informed, when these issues arise, we'll be better equipped to get through the situations hopefully with the least impact possible. We will start our opening day with this messaging and this training for our staff, and I've also asked our principals and directors to make sure that they are messaging this regularly throughout the school year as well. We are very fortunate to have the relationship with our village police force that we do. We have a full-time officer assigned to every building throughout the entire school day. It is a great comfort doing that I know to many that visit our schools and as well to our staff at the same time. Even here in Central Office, when we've had issues, the response time is almost under a minute if it's really an emergent situation. We'll also be strengthening and working further on our strategic plan. I had asked the board to endorse the strategic plan, which happened at the end of July. This will help focus our efforts, our professional development efforts, our curriculum efforts. The strategic planning initiative is really rooted in a collaborative setting as well between teachers, parents, community members that took part in the process. This will help drive us into the future hopefully with one voice, and I'm going to steal from Mr. St. Lawrence something that he's done very well since he's been here. He's going to do Freeze, which I hope that we can all attach ourselves to, one team. If we can move forward together with everything that we do to ensure that we're staying focused on the students that we serve, we'll be better for it. Finally, a lot of work had gone in on behalf of our clinicians, our guidance counselors, our leadership team on updating our guidance plan, and we spoke today at our cabinet meeting in preparing for the new school year about ensuring that, starting with this office, that we will be messaging out the services that our guidance plan offers at every building. For the first time ever, we will be starting the school year with a guidance counselor in every single building in the district. We'll be able to meet better SEL needs, we'll be able to have coordinated efforts for pushing services in the classrooms. Everything that we do now, we'll certainly be able to better address not just the SEL needs, but equally, if not more important, the academic needs and the growth of our students. So, we will be sure that we will communicate that with our families and show them the difference in the efforts that we have been planning for. Switching over to some of the summer work that was done, as we know, the board approved the remediation of some asbestos and plumbing and piping issues that had to be dealt with at Scotchston Avenue so that we could move forward into the roofing and HVAC upgrades hopefully next summer. That work was completed on time. All accolades to Mr. Freeze for overseeing that work over the summer. We're prepared now to hopefully move into the design phase and be able to keep that project on track and look to other needs around the district as well. So, I'd sent a message to the board last week, and I think it's important that we continue to talk about this and look at creative ways to hire. One of the things that we felt for the first time this summer, the teacher shortage is real, and the number of qualified applicants that we are seeing is decreasing rapidly. I will tell you, I'm uniquely concerned in the math and sciences. In some cases, when we had posted positions, multiple posted positions, we had no applicants, zero. This is going to continue to be an issue. I've had some individual private conversation with some teachers who have already discussed retirement. Mr. Carter and I have talked about strategies of going right to the teacher prep programs with students that aren't even done yet to start to talk about positions that may be open. We are going to really have to get creative. I've spoken with some fellow superintendents about the possibility of looking at a state, going to large job fairs that may exist in other states, trying to recruit people to come to New York, but I can tell you for the first time, the teacher shortage, it's real. We felt the effects deeply for the first time. Now, that being said, we are fully staffed with the Consent Agenda that you will approve tonight. We will ensure that all of our classrooms are covered. That does not mean that some of our staff won't be doing additional sections. We have teachers at the high school who will be covering some of those gaps with leave replacements, meaning that they're taking on extra classes to teach, but we will have a consistent teacher in the classroom covering all of our subjects for our leaves from day one. There will be no change until the regular teacher is to transition back. But again, Mr. Carter and I are already trying to problem solve and look to the new year as well because we know we have anticipated retirements that are going to be coming up in the new year, and we're going to have to work hard to be first in line, if you will, to get the most qualified candidates to be able to have the best services for our students. Last but not least, and it's always something great to talk about for the community, the fall athletic season has started. During our building tour tonight while we're both at our middle school and our high school, it was wonderful to see students and families and community members out on our fields again enjoying the contest. It's not only a great way to build character for our students and build camaraderie and build teamwork, but it's the center of our community. We know that many people in this community love to come out and watch our athletic contests. Our fields are ready for as good as they can be with the lack of rain that we have. Our facilities are clean, our teams are organized, and we are ready to have a great year and offer a great product for our students and offer great opportunities. So, we're ready for a good school year. Our administrative leadership team has been working hard, our facilities are ready, and as we said, we're hoping for a productive, healthy, and happy school year. Turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Coates. Go ahead.
Can we, I know I asked her, and it was my old slip of mine, but can we get her question out like we do in the calendar?
Sure.
So, we'll just put backs and stuff like that? And to piggyback on that, I think your comment about the coes on community and enjoying our facilities and our students in action, does it relate to put that out each week?
Yeah.
I don't know, how it related through Twitter or Facebook or through Yoni or along those lines?
So, I can have some conversation with Christina Gore on some ways to pump up the schedule. I know Mr. St. Lawrence's office manages the schedule and we have it on our website, but there's different broadcast mechanisms to make sure that it's getting out there regularly.
Yeah, something that's different than normal distribution for people going after the school.
So, Mrs. Gore has always told me that she is surprised by how many followers we have on Instagram. There's another way to pump out a link down there to make sure it's going out. She tries to hit Facebook pretty regularly. We don't hate to say, we, the aging population that are still on Facebook, look for it there as well. We have so many different sources right now, but she's very adept at that, and I'll talk to her about making sure we have multiple venues to broadcast the schedule.
Not just for athletes and, you know, how is there any plays? Anything?
Thank you. Next on the agenda, the Assistant Superintendent for Business Report.
Thank you. It's just very busy in business office this time of the year. Our tax bills went out, so our collections will be starting soon, and we're currently working on the state aid reports which are due, and the transparency report, which is the budget portion of the transparency report for New York State that is also due. That's a 22-23 school year, and it's interesting because we're working on that, 22-23, at the same time we're working on 21-22, doing the state aid numbers. So, that's going on, tax collection. We're still finalizing the external audit and the internal audits.
Do you want to talk about the tax collection box?
Oh, sure. I think, yeah, I did last time, not that much. We do have a tax collection box that's mounted in the main lobby out here in Main Street Building, and we will be collecting payments in there. We won't be collecting them in person, but people can come in and drop their payments in there, and we will be sending out a receipt after a few days or even a little bit longer, but once the check's clear, then we'll have those out. So, we are semi-in-person collecting again, not just sending them down to, what is it, Philadelphia?
Pointe Plains.
Pointe Plains, okay. They are being mailed to a P.O. box locally as well.
Front door open?
So, it'll be in the, if you look up front, it's already mounted to the wall.
Front doors are open.
Front doors are open. So, you'll be able to come during business hours and drop it in them bars. We also installed a security camera out there as well.
And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Personnel and Technology Report.
Thank you, Mrs. Solti. Good evening, everyone. So, as we had a chance to see this evening, our buildings are in great shape, a lot of great efforts put forth to prepare our buildings, to have our children, faculty, staff come back. We're really excited about that. While all that was going on, our administrative team, faculty, and staff members also prepared a lot of our back-to-school events, and that's a really important part of what we do through the month of August in particular. Gives our students a chance to prepare to transition back into school, gives our students a chance to see some friends that they may not have a chance to see throughout the summer, but more importantly, it sets them up for success, ready to return, ready to get after it with it. I would like to mention quickly some of those back-to-school events, just so our community knows exactly what went on at each of our buildings. So, at Scotchston Avenue School, Municipal School, in fact, a few staff members put together a popsicle with a principal event, which was very well attended, very cute as well. Kindergarten social, again, we had our kindergarten students come into the facility, they had a chance to play on the playground, see some friends that they may not have seen in a few months, very nice. Today, while we were at the facility, you probably noticed a lot of families in our building, that was our self-guided tour. And tomorrow, we've got the K-2, K through 2 meet and greets, so our teachers will be there for our families to actually chat with, again, walk around the facility, getting them prepared for what's to come in the next fall. At GIS, we did have our self-guided tours as well today, and there is a Grade 3 scavenger hunt tomorrow, so that's pretty neat. We'll have our students go in to meet with their homeroom teachers and then go off into the building to complete a scavenger hunt, quite interesting. CJ Hooker had a wonderfully
One voice and I'm going to steal from Mr. St. Lawrence, something that he's done very well since he's been here. He's going to do Freeze, which I hope that we can all attach ourselves to one team. If we can move forward together with everything that we do to ensure that we're staying focused on the students that we serve, we'll be better for it. Finally, a lot of work had gone in on behalf of our clinicians, our guidance counselors, our leadership team on updating our guidance plan. And we spoke today at our cabinet meeting and preparing for the new school year about ensuring that, starting with this office, that we will be messaging out the services that our guidance plan offers at every building. For the first time ever, we will be starting the school year with a guidance counselor in every single building in the district. We'll be able to meet better SCL needs, we'll be able to have coordinated efforts for pushing services in the classrooms. Everything that we do now will certainly be able, we will be able to better address not just the SCL needs, but equally, if not more important, the academic needs and the growth of our students. So we will be sure that we will communicate that with our families and show them the difference in the efforts that we have been planning for. Switching over to some of the summer work that was done, as we know, the board approved the remediation of some asbestos and plumbing and piping issues that had to be dealt with at Scottstown Avenue so that we could move forward into the roofing and HVAC upgrades hopefully next summer. That work was completed on time. All accolades to Mr. Freeze for overseeing that work over the summer. We're prepared now to hopefully move into the design phase and be able to keep that project on track and look to other needs around the district as well. So I'd sent a message to the board last week and I think it's important that we continue to talk about this and look at creative ways to hire. One of the things that we felt for the first time this summer, the teacher shortage is real. And the number of qualified applicants that we are seeing is decreasing rapidly. I will tell you, I'm uniquely concerned in the math and sciences. Now, in some cases, when we had posted positions, multiple posted positions, we had no applicants, zero. This is going to continue to be an issue. I've had some individual private conversation with some teachers who have already discussed retirement. Mr. Carter and I have talked about strategies of going right to the teacher prep programs with students that aren't even done yet to start to talk about positions that may be open. We are going to really have to get creative. I've spoken with some fellow superintendents about the possibility of looking at a state, going to large job fairs that may exist in other states, trying to recruit people to come to New York. But I can tell you, for the first time, the teacher shortage, it's real. We felt the effects of it deeply for the first time. Now, that being said, we are fully staffed with the consent agenda that you will approve tonight. We will ensure that all of our classrooms are covered. That does not mean that some of our staff won't be doing additional sections. We have teachers at the high school who will be covering some of those gaps with leave replacements, meaning that they're taking on extra classes to teach. But we will have a consistent teacher in the classroom covering all of our subjects for our leaves from day one. There will be no change until the regular teacher is to transition back. But again, Mr. Carter and I are already trying to problem solve and look to the new year as well. Because we know we have anticipated retirements that are going to be coming up in the new year. And we're going to have to work hard to be first in line, if you will, to get the most qualified candidates to be able to have the best services for our students. Last but not least, and it's always something great to talk about for the community, the fall athletic season has started. During our building tour tonight while we were both at our middle school and our high school, it was wonderful to see students and families and community members out on our fields again, enjoying the contest. It's not only a great way to build character for our students and build camaraderie and build teamwork, but it's the center of our community. We know that many people in this community love to come out and watch our athletic contests. Our fields are ready, for as good as they can be with the lack of rain that we have. Our facilities are clean, our teams are organized, and we are ready to have a great year and offer a great product for our students and offer great opportunities. So we're ready for a good school year. Our administrative leadership team has been working hard. Our facilities are ready. And as we said, we're hoping for a productive, healthy, and happy school year. Turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Coles. Go ahead.
Can we, I know I asked her and it was my old slip of mine, but can we get her a question out like a meeting in the calendar?
Sure.
Wow. So we'll just put backs and stuff like that? And to piggyback on that, I think your comment about Dr. Coles on community and enjoying our facilities and our students in action, is it related to put that out each week?
Yeah.
I don't know, how it related through Twitter or Facebook or through the community or along those lines?
I got some conversation with Christina Gore on some ways to pump up the schedule. I know Mr. St. Lawrence's office manages the schedule. We have it on our website, but there's different broadcast mechanisms to make sure that it's getting out there regularly.
Yeah, something that's different than the normal distribution for people going after the school.
So Mrs. Gore has always told me that she is surprised by how many followers we have on Instagram. There's another way to pump out a link down there to make sure it's going out. She tries to hit Facebook pretty regularly. We don't hate to say, we, the aging population that are still on Facebook, look for it there as well. We have so many different sources right now, but she's very adept at that. And I'll talk to her about making sure we have multiple venues to broadcast the schedule.
Not just for athletics and, you know, how is there a place? Anything that's, you know, so.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, the Assistant Superintendent for Business report, Lori.
Thank you. It's just very busy in the business office this time of the year. Our tax bills went out, so our collections will be starting soon. And we're currently working on the state aid reports, which are due, and the transparency report, which is the budget portion of the transparency report for New York State. That is also due. That's a 2223 story there. And it's interesting because we're working on that, 2223, at the same time we're working on 2122, doing the state aid numbers. So that's going on, tax collection. We're still finalizing the external audit and the internal audits.
Do you want to talk about the tax collection box?
Oh, sure. I think, yeah, I did last time. Not that much. We do have a tax collection box that's mounted in the main lobby out here in Main Street building. And we will be collecting payments in there. We won't be collecting them in person, but people can come in and drop their payments in there. And we will be sending out a receipt after a few days or even a little bit longer, but once the check's clear, then we'll have those out. So we're semi-in-person collecting again, not just sending them down to, what is it, Philadelphia?
Pointe Blanks.
Pointe Blanks, okay. They are being mailed to a P.O. box locally as well.
Front door open?
So it'll be in the, if you look up front, it's already mounted to the wall.
The front doors are open.
Front doors are open. So you'll be able to come during business hours and drop it in them bars. We also installed a security camera out there as well.
And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Personnel and Technology Report.
Thank you, Mrs. Saltine. Good evening, everyone. So as we had a chance to see this evening, our buildings are in great shape. A lot of great efforts put forth to prepare our buildings, to have our children, faculty, staff come back. We're really excited about that. While all that was going on, our administrative team, faculty and staff members also prepared a lot of our back-to-school events. And that's a really important part of what we do through the month of August in particular. Gives our students a chance to prepare to transition back into school. Gives our students a chance to see some friends that they may not have a chance to see throughout the summer. But more importantly, it sets them up for success, ready to return, ready to get after it with it. I would like to mention quickly, some of those back-to-school events, just so our community knows exactly what went on at each of our buildings. So at Scottstown Avenue School, New Jersey School, and in fact, a few staff members put together a popsicle with a principal event, which was very well attended. Very cute as well. Kindergarten social, again, we had our kindergarten students come into the facility. They had a chance to play on the playground, see some friends that they may not have seen in a few months. Very nice. Today, while we were at the facility, you probably noticed a lot of families in our building. That was our self-guided tour. And tomorrow, we've got the K two, K through two meet and greets. So our teachers will be there for our families to actually chat with, again, walk around the facility, getting them prepared for what's to come in the coming day. At GIS, we did have our self-guided tours as well today, and there is a grade three scavenger hunt tomorrow. So that's pretty neat. We'll have our students go in to meet with their homeroom teachers and then go off into the building to complete a scavenger hunt. Quite interesting. CJ Hooker had a wonderfully attended ice cream social, Dr. Coles on, we were able to attend. It was great. I believe we had five or six big boxes of ice cream consumed in addition to a lot of toppings and popsicles. And that's probably over 10 gallons of ice cream, so quite nice. And at Goshen High School, we had the freshman barbecue, which some of you were able to attend. What a great event. And we also had the fall athletics barbecue, which was also outstanding. You know, while we had some senior pictures going on. We also had all of our athletes on the field with Mr. St. Lawrence. Wonderful picture opportunity and a great message shared. So as you can see, a lot of wonderful events throughout the months of August, and I think we're prepared to come back to school. So I'd like to take a moment just to wish everyone well, wish everyone good luck. I'm excited. Welcome back.
Can I just add, didn't they do something new this year, like with media day? I wasn't exactly aware because it was kind of like this date from it, but I had heard and it sounded like it was very exciting. You know, a lot of those students, I think it was at the high school, I don't know if it was affecting any of our other buildings.
Personally, partially, half my, the St. Lawrence, want to dress up for the board?
Sure. I'm just going to step outside and get in touch with everybody, putting the audience, put my coaching voice on and, as you know, I'm very proud to say, with the help of the varsity club in particular, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Harris, we did a first-ever media day here. It was Friday afternoon from 11:00 to 12:30. We asked all of our teams, all of our coaches to be in the full dress uniforms. They came for the picture opportunities, which allows us to do a couple of things. It allows us with our technology staff to be able to put things on the scoreboard for soccer and football events and cheerleaders and get all the captains' pictures taken. We also, then, we can get all the senior pictures. So that will be available for our media distribution as well. And then midway through, after we did each team, we got asked all the student athletes to have a bite to eat. We appreciate the administrative staff being here to support this event. It was a really nice day weather-wise. And then we all got together for a large group picture of all of our fall athletic teams in full garb, lined up, red, white, and blue. And we talked about the message of one team, that we are a Goshen soccer player, a Goshen volleyball player, a Goshen swimmer, that we all support each other, and we all wear red, white, and blue. And the kids loved it. I loved it. The coaches loved it, and I'm proud to be able to share that with the community and the school board tonight. So that's our first-ever media day, and I do think it will be an annual plan at this level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Saltine.
Next on the agenda, any motion for the consent agenda? Jason, Brett? It resolves upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Abstained.
Opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda, old business. I believe that Dr. Coles is ready for a discussion on the intermunicipal agreement with Orange, Bosse, Bosse. Dr. Coles?
So as you recall, Bosse was here to give a presentation of the high-level overview of the capital improvement projects. They will be presented to the public for a public vote. Part of our responsibility in being a member district, if the resolution is passed, how will we fulfill our obligation to their capital improvement plan? In doing so, Bosse has asked for consideration of two different items. Either one, the board adopting what we would refer to as an intermunicipal agreement, intermunicipal funding agreement. Or if that is to fail, then they would have to go back to the dormitory authority to be able to borrow that individually on their own. They are asking for a response from the board on the 16th. As I said, Bosse is asking us for the IMA, asking all member districts for the IMA. For the board to keep in mind that even one member district votes against the IMA, the Bosse is then required to borrow the money on their own. What they will be doing, if they have to go back to the dormitory authority, they will be increasing the amount of the capital improvement project to account for those additional costs. And also to keep in mind, simply approving the IMA is not an indicator of the board's approval or disapproval of the project. It is simply the board's statement that if this project passes, this is how we intend to fund the work. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lamery and just to talk about the IMAs, so the board can be reminded of what it means for the district should be approved.
And BPD was with Bosse at one of our board meetings recently where they did go over some of this. And I did take the highlights and put it in a bullet point document here in the board package. I'll just run through it briefly. So the total district share for Goshen is $9.7 million. And with an IMA, it's, we can decide how we're going to fund that amount of money. We could do it over three years through our budget as an expenditure to Bosse's. Now, the first year that we make this expenditure, regardless of it being through our, the IMA and whatever we decide to do there, or through DASNY, we do get aided through Bosse's aid in the year following the expenditure. We do not get billing aid on this, but rather Bosse's aid. So we could look at, cutting it over three years, four years. We could also do short-term financing over three years. We could take out bands. Right now, the proposed or the projected interest rate on bands is 4%. I don't know, you know, for sure what it will be if we were to go that route yet, but that's just a rough estimate. And that would cost us roughly $390,000. Long-term, multi-year financing, we could do a 20-year bond, and that financing is estimated to be over $5.2 million. So it's, it is nice to be able to have these options so that we can reduce the amount that we will have to spend if we go through DASNY. Because the cost through DASNY could be an additional $5.7 million. Additional issuance costs because you have your bonding attorneys and your legal fees and advertising and whatnot, that's another $350,000. And over the life of that bond through DASNY could be another $1.44 million. So the only caveat with DASNY is that it does not impact our debt limit if we should have to go through that because Bosse is technically borrowing the money. Regardless of the financing, the project must still pass through all of the districts in general, through all voters in all districts. And the project is still payable in the year following the expense, regardless of the way we choose to finance it. So as a recommendation, I would say that IMA is the least expensive route to go. Finding, getting that funding the following year of your first year's expense will be a big help to us in budget, regardless if we do short-term bands or over a short period of time.
Any questions?
So the only lingering question is if the board is going to choose to approve this as an IMA for us to have direction to have it as a resolution on the 6th. If not, I just want to be able to inform Bosse of the difference and not to support it.
If I can just say something, we had no experience with anything like this before. Because our project hasn't been done since the eighties. I think I'd like to speak for the rest of my board members that we need to advertise. I have no idea what we're doing.
Well, I think it's IMA is the only way. I think it's IMA is the only way to go. Really, what they're asking of us is to support the IMA.
Right now, right.
No, the, that's really what we support here, whether.
I get that.
If the project itself is being more, what people want to do there, then really it's going to be sort of voters. We don't, the board, we're not only going to support or be interested in that, but truly choosing, having to fund this and based on information that they provided, I think it's much more.
So if I can, you know, if we want to open that discussion, I'll take it at your direction. Some of us had an opportunity to go and see the facilities itself, including Mr. Castle and Dr. Castle as well. Largely, the scope of work is all deferred infrastructure work. I have to say, the number is massive. It's big. There's no if, ands, or buts about it. But everything that they explained to us is all infrastructure. It's roofs, it's boilers, it's controls, it's windows. You know, there's nothing in there that they're looking, with the exception of a little bit of site work at the Arden Hill facility. They're looking to build a new gym so that they have gym space for the students there to be able to have PE sessions while they're there. Everything else is just simply deferred maintenance. It's a really big number, but the one thing that I can say on Bosse's behalf, there's nothing extraneous in there. I mean, go line item by line item of what they presented. I get it.
I think it's communication, I think it's any communication though personally. Any communication personally, because a lot of people don't understand that number and how we participate in that number.
I agree.
And coming off of our own project number.
Yep.
I think that's going to be a source discussion, but I think for their purposes, they're going to have to communicate that. And for our purposes, we got to communicate about what's in our control, what's not in our control.
I think from the district perspective, we need to make sure our voting population understands when the vote is and how they can participate. We have to have this location as our site for voting. Maybe one site?
One site will be this.
It'll be this site for voting, so our voters will have an opportunity to participate. We can communicate that, but as far as, I would caution the board about expenditure funds for us to market for, market against.
No, I'd say that.
That's on Bosse's.
My understanding was when we were here, that's going to be all their expense.
Correct. That's correct.
And the voting, so I'll be re-revving them.
Well, I think it's important that we let our community know.
Yeah, maybe through our email, through our, through email, because of that website, Facebook, Instagram, all three things. But I don't think we should send anybody on mail anything like that.
Agreed. Agreed.
And they're, my also line of saying, they're going to cover the cost for the voting that you're right? And are we holding one in? Because even if they necessarily were to hold one in this district, I don't think you're going to.
Yeah, I think it was going to be each district. They were going to have it. Right, so they would have it here and they would run it for us? The one question, and I don't remember, I'm not sure if you remember, did they say when the vote was going to be?
They've moved it now to October 27th.
Okay. So, and I think probably kind of what Jason's saying is, just to communicate that this vote will be happening here. Because I think a lot of people will not, will not understand what is going on unless they've been following the news.
Absolutely. Agreed. And Christina can almost do a Q and A locally that can be communicated digitally at no cost. That I think is important because I think subsequently, I hate to say it, people that don't want it to pass are going to look to us, why didn't you communicate? People that do want it to pass are going to look to us, why didn't you communicate? I'd rather get something out rather than nothing, because at the end of the day, we have students that benefit from it. We send students to the vocational programs. We benefit from their special education programs. We do have students where it is cost-effective for us to access their services.
Thank you.
So.
Any other comments, questions?
I think the visitor, I think my guide.
Right, you want to go last?
We don't necessarily need a vote now, but we need guidance. Are we going to prepare for the next meeting to have a resolution for?
I think we could have, people say, the IMA, right? Yeah, because again, we're just, if the public votes for this, this is how we would pay for it. Public doesn't vote for it. That's simply, we're deciding how we would pay for it.
That is correct.
If the public votes to approve it.
That is correct.
Right. And right now, we're only deciding to put the resolution to vote on the IMA at, since it's next weekend.
That's correct.
So, yeah, so we're good.
Yeah, we're good to go. And I think what's clear, just to your point, is to say what our obligation is to pay for. I think that might be a word we should use.
Because if it's, yeah, we can't opt out.
Yeah, once, even if Goshen votes it, even if the population in Goshen voted against it, it's really, it's a chemical weapon.
There are seven, I think seventeen member districts.
So even so.
Between, between Orange and.
But again, it's out of our control. Vote happening regardless.
Vote happening.
Vote's going to be what's happening, what's in our control financially and the best way to do it.
This is how we would choose to pay our obligation.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, new business. I need a motion for goal point one, the minutes. I have Tom and Jason. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the minutes for the August 15th, 2022 regular board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda, I need a motion to ratify the supplemental memorandum of agreements with GTA. Brett, Jason? Be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby ratifies a supplemental memorandum of agreement between the Goshen Central School District and the Goshen Teachers Association dated August 23rd, 2022, regarding the incorporation of salary and working conditions for the athletic trainer and nurse practitioner positions into their 2021, 2024 collective bargaining agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda, I need a motion to ratify the MOA between the Goshen Central School District and the GAO. Jason and Tom? Be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby ratifies the provisions of the memorandum of agreement between the Goshen Central School District and the Goshen Administrators Association dated August 24th, 2022, and authorizes the funding of those monies necessary to implement the provisions of a 2021, 2024 collectively negotiated agreement with the Goshen Administrators Association. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda, I need a motion to approve and accept the proposal from LAN for services related to HVAC upgrades at SAS. Tom and Jason? Be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby approves the proposal from LAN Associates Engineering Planning Architecture Survey, LLP, LAN, dated August 22nd, 2022, to provide architectural and engineering services relating to the HVAC upgrade project at Scottstown Avenue Elementary School at a fee of $521,000 for said services. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the proposal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda, privilege of the board. We don't have anyone that has signed up. Next on the agenda, any board member issues or committee reports?
Tomorrow morning.
Oh, opening day tomorrow, yep.
So we will begin breakfast at 7:45. The congregation will begin after that on the fields. So any board members that can be there to support the staff in the opening day, welcome your guests.
I was just going to comment, Dr. Coles did a great job. I was able to attend the security meeting, the tabletop exercise with the police department and fire. It was great to see, there was productive conversations from everybody involved, from administration, from law enforcement and ambulance. And I think a lot of productive ideas back and forth that can be solved. It was great to see that the administration is very serious on security and that the board will support that as well.
Thank you. And if I could just add in one thing, one of the things that we've had an ongoing dialogue on that, Mr. Freeze is invested in looking to find solutions on his communications. We heard it again tonight on our tour as well. Some of our repeaters for our radio systems are dated, they're antiquated, and in true emergency, we need to have asynchronous contact and we need to be able to work together with our board to make sure that we can find remediation for these issues. I hate to say it, I take the perspective that it's not if these issues happen, when these issues happen, we need to be prepared. And it happened right next door in Florida last year where they had a mass evacuation. And the one thing that we were reminded of when we spoke with law enforcement, when they were here, as hard as we planned, these issues are still messing. You know, they really, the best laid plans, thereto shall they go. But without a plan, some plan is better than no plan, and we need to continuously work off on how we make that stronger. It starts not only with a relationship between administration and board, but the number of law enforcement agents that were here, state, the town, the village, the ANBAS, the fire, those relationships are going to be what we need when the moment comes. And it was a great sign, and we're planning to do it again throughout the year. They welcome those conversations and dialogue. They want to be a part of it. And again, there is a resource. They are only there for emergent circumstances. The number of times that our SROs are in classrooms just having conversations with students and with faculty. And they are a great resource for us, and I agree with what Mr. Weeden has shared. The team takes it seriously and they have to.
Now, the engagement is great. Everyone's engaged from, just to see the cooperation and communication between all of the societies.
Thank you. Thank you.
One last thing for me would be, I don't know, Dr. Coats, and everybody's, now you're focused on getting us open, and I know, past experience, it's time slips by, I don't know where it's going to be.
Congratulations, thanks for sitting there.
Congratulations. I'm very excited.
Second, I'd like to echo what Allison said, Dr. Coats, Mr. Freeze, you and your staff, summer break's not that long. You guys got a lot done, everything looks real good, and you and the maintenance staff, good job, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we did have an executive session, but that's an all-in-one meeting. And that is it. So I'm closing the meeting. Everyone have a good evening. Thanks for coming out tonight. All motion to close. Jason, Brett? All those in favor?